All right. Good morning, everybody. We're back. So let's dive right in and have Mark. How was about support services?
Absolutely. We're going to start off with Mr. Taylor talking about a gatekeeper for Phillips Lake Park.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I'm sorry, I'm looking for my, oh, there it is. Looks like my computer's running a little slow this morning. I apologize. Ah, there we are. Good morning, Commissioners. We've had a report out at Phillips Lake by the people that live out there that there's been parties after hours. The issue that we're having is there's a gate out there, but we share that lake property with the state. I've contacted the state and talked to them. They're rather hands-off on the issue. I get, I understand several years ago, we had a contract in place that someone in the community would secure that gate. In the more, at night and unlock it in the morning, and that contract has gone away. So what I'm briefing you on today is we'd like to bring that contract back and secure that gate. So that those parties can't continue and leave the mess that's out there. In the past, the amount was a hundred, I think a hundred and fifty dollars. We've gotten it down to a hundred dollars per month. And housing group out there says that they have somebody that would like to execute the contract and be able to do that, and they'll ensure that when that person's not available, the gate will still be locked and unlocked when it's supposed to be. So we're asking that you review this and approve it so that we can secure that gate and ensure that those parties are discontinued.
But I'm all good with that.
I'm completely supportive as well. I think maybe you ought to consider though, going back to the hundred and fifty if it's not an issue and include in there that they will go down there upon request from, from you or somebody in management to go and inspect it because there's something else that they hear.
We can do that, sir.
No, I think it's a great idea. So I was looking at the contract. Do we need to, because it has a name specific? And I'm just wondering if we need to maybe put in there just a responsible party? I don't know. As far as liability, does that, does that matter?
Well, I think what we may want to do, Commissioner Ray, is put in a name as being the primary, but being able to say when that person's not available, somebody can be appointed. That way, we still have one person to answer to as opposed to multiple.
Yeah, I would feel comfortable with that. Changing that just a bit.
Awesome. We can do that. Is there any other questions?
Me.
Nope.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John. Our next item is Mary.
Did have a question about that contract. Was it run through risk?
I can check on that.
Okay.
It may have been the original one. They're recycling it, but doesn't hurt to look at it again.
We should, we should run them all through risk and legal, so make sure.
Um, so this morning I just have one item, um, a memorandum of understanding with the Woodworkers Local Lodge, W thirty eight I A M for the Corrections and Support Staff for an update to the twenty-two to twenty-four C B A in language Article eleven for hours of labor. Um, changing from in the M O U, it spells out the current language. And then the new language, so essentially it's a collapse of Sections A and B into just a section A.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Barry.
Right, moving right along, Jen. How's our financials look for June?
Good morning. I'll share my screen, but first Diane looked like she wanted to say something, so I wanted to ask you, Diane, if you had something.
No, I just wanted to let him know that yes, Nicole looked at it and she had a few comments, so we'll make sure that it meets whatever Nicole says it needs on that gatekeeper contract.
Thanks, Diane.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen here. Okay, can you all see the financials?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so starting on page two, we've got the current expense revenue through June of twenty-three compared to June of twenty-two. We have twenty-three million nine hundred thirty-six thousand received through June compared to last year, twenty-four million two hundred and sixty-four thousand. Uh, we're at fifty-six percent of our budgeted revenue compared to last year. We were at sixty percent. And most of that, it looks like, is in the treasurer's office, so we'll go to that next. Okay, so looking at, um, in the treasurer's office, the revenue, we have, um, through June of twenty-three, sixteen million seven hundred forty-seven thousand received through June compared to last year, seventeen million six hundred twenty-four thousand. We're at fifty-nine percent of our budgeted revenue received this year compared to sixty-five percent last year. Um, a lot of that has to do with, um, the property tax. We didn't do the levy shift this year, so that was expected. Um, that was a million eighty thousand that we did last year. And, um, the city county assistance is down as we've talked about in prior months. This year, we've received eight hundred and nineteen thousand compared to, um, last year at the same time, about two point four six one million. So, um, so that's a big chunk of where we're, where we're down. Um, the rev, or the interest, um, earnings this year are up about a million dollars, um, compared to last year. We were at a hundred and twenty-two thousand. This year, we're at one point one five million. Um, so that's a nice little perk of of the downturn in the economy or slight downturn in the economy. Um, any questions on the treasurer's revenue or any other revenue before we move on to expenditures?
Yes, Jennifer, if you don't mind, could you, uh, you don't have to have it right now, but get it for me and maybe send me an email later, uh, uh, showing why the difference in the auditor's numbers, the clerk's numbers, the sheriff's numbers and indigent defense, please.
Okay.
What we think the reasoning is behind that.
Sure. And I'll send that to all Commissioners.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to the current expense expenditures, we have expended, um, twenty-one, twenty-one million three hundred and fifty-eight thousand uh, so far this year compared to last year, we were at nineteen million four hundred and sixty thousand. And we've expended about forty-four percent of our, our budget compared to last year, same thing, forty-four percent. So that looks pretty consistent across the board. Moving on to the, um, special fund, six-year recap. The community development revenue is up just slightly, so that, that's good news. Detention and corrections looks flat with last year. Um, the property taxes, we already talked about the levy shift is the reason it's down. Um, road diversion looks pretty flat as expected. County road property tax is up because of the levy shift, shifted it back to roads. Um, the sales tax is up still, so that's great. Criminal justice taxes and entitlements, that is a little bit up. Rural sales and use, that's up as it follows the, the sales tax trends. Homelessness preventions are down. Lodging tax is, uh, a little bit down from last year, but, um, looking pretty pretty consistent over the last couple of years. And then the REIT is down as expected. So any questions on that?
Nope.
Moving on to the sales tax detail, so in June, we received, um, seven hundred sixty-three thousand compared to last year, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, so it's back up this month. Last month was the first month, um, in, I believe, a year and a half or so, uh, that it was down for the first time ever. We're projected to receive about nine point five six million if we receive exactly what we did um, last year from July through December, which is about five million one hundred forty-nine thousand dollars. So, uh, sales tax is looking great.
Just for the Commissioners, I wanted to let you know, just following that other one, we were on the REIT, uh, where we were at forty percent before difference, uh, then we were into the thirties. Now it's at twenty-nine, so we're actually yeah, we're not where we should be. We're gaining ground back. We're no longer at forty and we're now at well, that's a good sign and that's month over month, so I just wanted to share that with everybody, sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, that's okay. That's great news.
And it's, and it's still two months lag, so if there's additional activity occurring through the summertime when we normally see increases, then hopefully we'll see that number diminish even more.
So moving on to our, um, cash and our, our overall, um, uh, budget percentages, so we're at twenty-nine point four six million in cash at the end of June, um, which is an increase year over year for, over the past five years. Um, we do have that L A T C F funds, I believe it's called, um, the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Funds. Um, that's about four hundred thousand included in there, and it's, it's not, uh, listed as a separate reserve here. Um, but that is included in there, so, um, just something to keep in mind. Um, the, we're overall-
Was that historically included in there?
Um, it's a new thing, so it's, we received money in January and we're, we received three hundred and ninety-seven thousand and we're supposed to receive another uh, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand later on this year at some point. They're going to notify us when it's available.
But is that money that's going out or is that going to stay in our cash fund?
Um, it's money that we, we will need to spend on anything but lobbying services at some point in time. We can hold on to it um, for ever if we want to. I mean, not-
Okay, so it, it will stay, it will stay in our ending fund balance with the expectation that eventually we will spend it, but it'll be cash on hand, okay? I'm just trying to figure out where we're going to be historically as we always have for each year at the end of this year. Uh, past history.
Yeah, we just have to report that, um, that money, whether we've spent it or not, um, annually until we spend it, so, um, it would be in our best interest to spend it, um, this year or next year, I would think, um, just so that we're not holding on to it, doing unnecessary, unnecessary reporting, um, later on, so um, just something to keep in mind. Um, we're at fifty-six percent of our total, um, budget this year for revenue and then, um, we're at forty-five percent, it shows here, but I don't think the expenditure uh, budgets includes the June, um, supplemental, so we're really at forty-four percent, um. So looking very consistent, um, with both revenues and, and expenditures looking back over the last five years.
So, Jen, this is actually important. I'm trying to keep track for myself for the ending fund balance at the end of the year. We're going behind on revenue right now. I asked you on those other departments, so we can try and determine whether or not we actually still can expect it to come in at the end of the year. I would expect that the revenues from the treasures will still come in at the end of the year because they usually always do. Uh, with very little difference, it's just timing sometimes when people have the money on hand to pay their taxes if they don't. With that being said, uh, that's why I'm trying to figure out where we'll be at the end, uh, so when you're looking at those numbers, keep that in mind, please.
Okay.
That's four percent is, is quite a, is quite a lot of money, actually.
Yeah, and my guess with the auditor, clerk and sheriff and probably indigent defense also is that it's, um, grants, but, um, I'll, I'll check on that. So looking at the cash balances through June, we have, um, sixty million eight hundred and thirty-three thousand roughly in cash in our special funds. Um, compared to last year and the previous four years before that, we, last year we were at forty-seven million nine hundred and, um, we're just increasing year over year, so, um, I didn't analyze this, um, very heavily, but it, it looks like everybody's doing pretty good. So far, so any-
ARPA, ARPA County Road Funds, I mean, those are some of our bigger ones. Public health.
Yeah, there's health and then we have, um, community, um, support services. And ARPA, of course, is temporary, um. We won't have that many.
Yeah, but that's a pretty good number in the lodging tax.
Diane's been letting us know about that.
Yeah, also in mental health, we're, we may have to do some discussions coming up.
I'm sure that, um, Dave is here and I think some of that is that new funding model, the foundational public health model that they're doing, Randy, so, um, I guess if I would summarize it at a high level, I feel like we're getting out of the grant business and, and they're actually giving us money, uh, directly to Mason County from, through the Department of Health to actually go out and do.
That would be different. I could see it. That would make sense. Thank you.
That's not just our fund balance from treatment sales tax?
Yeah, that's our, our fund balance from, from treatment sales tax that continues to grow over year. Um, so we, we budget based on the sales tax for current expense, um, so that, you know, it's consistent and, um, so if we're budgeting for a certain amount of sales tax and current expense, um, then we're going to budget the, the same, um, percentage we would receive in mental health. And, um, so we, we use that money to, um, to fund the different, uh, mental health, um, you know, things out of that, that balance. And what happens is it keeps on growing, uh, because we, um, not because, but we're not expending the full amount that we budget.
Yeah.
And so it just keeps on growing year over year.
And that's what I'm saying. It looks like a, a half a million balloon. I'm going back and I'm looking at the public health fund. That's probably what you were talking about, Mark, and and that makes a lot of sense for that one.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, that is the one I was going to. Um, and I think if we, if I remember correctly, and Jen, maybe you can help, um, brush off the cobwebs there, but the, the mental health, um, I believe in just last year when you did your financial report, you identified departments that had not submitted for reimbursement, um, that was budgeted to be reimbursed out of this mental health fund.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a huge part of it. And so we're budgeting for tho- those departments to bill. Last year was the first year we had, um, some departments that didn't build anything or, uh, one in particular, but, um, each year, they're, they're not billing what they budget, and so that amount comes back into the, um, the pot so of cash, you know, it's not-
It just stays, it stays there in that mental health fund as opposed to being, coming back into other funds to reimburse for the costs that were incurred there.
Yes. Um, so that is something we should probably take a look at.
I agree.
That's also, um, Commissioners, where we funded the co-responder program from, so that'll that'll lead into that balance there as well.
The landfill looks like they're pretty healthy right now, um. North Bay, that one's always looking, looking good. Um, Russellwood is really lean, so, um, you know, they always are.
It always is, but then again, where are we at on the oh-nine again?
Point oh-nine, we are at, um.
One point eight.
One point eight, I mean, it does. So then what do we have? So it's static across the board, uh. Well, uh, we just know we have some water issues there and I'm just looking at where we may look at, uh, find out how much of that is encumbered. Does it, we have to look at that if we try to do some of the things? They don't have the funds within their system to do it.
So the question is-
That we can, we can also look at, at grants through, um, health, you know, ecology. And then, um, there's also some through commerce, the drinking water.
But depending on what we have, time may be also a little bit of the essence. We don't want to ever happen again what happened. Uh, we can keep looking at it year after year, but it's happened five times in the last so many years.
Right, it only needs to be fixed.
Yeah, we could also take a look at REIT two. Maybe for a little bit more. I mean, we, we budget for Russellwood, um, their loan payment every year.
Yeah.
Maybe some maintenance work that, um, is on the the facility that we could budget as well. Any other questions or comments on the cash before we move on?
Uh, for the Commissioners, keep track of the, uh, Equipment Rental Revolving Fund. Uh, as they get ready, eventually here, they're going to have to come to us with some purchases with the numbers getting up to that level.
I think too, what, what's happened here is they're actually billing, um, monthly like they should be doing, where the past few years they've been billing in December for the entire year.
Oh, that's, that's a good improvement.
Yeah, so, um, this year we actually changed their rates to, um, to reduce their cash balance. So overall, they should, when, when we end the year, they shouldn't be as high as they were ending in previous years. That was the plan anyway.
Yeah, good. We'll see what that looks like.
Yeah, and with internal service funds, it's pretty easy to, um, navigate that cash balance because there's not generally unexpected revenue coming in like there might be with the general fund or other funds. Uh, moving on to the motor pool, we're at forty-one point seven one percent of our budget. Um, compared to last year, we were at, uh, sixty-seven percent, and I think a lot of that has to do with the, um, the capital outfit, uh, we didn't have, we, we haven't had as much, um, expended this year as we did last year, so, um, so that's a big part of it.
Do you think that the cars that we have on order that we haven't received yet are also impacting that?
Yeah. Um, any other questions or comments on this one? Okay, so our last two pages, we have the special funds revenue. We're at fifty percent of our, our budgeted, um, revenue for special and other funds, um, we've received twenty-nine million eight hundred twenty-four thousand this year compared to twenty-seven million seven hundred and thirteen thousand last year. Um, last year we were at thirty-four percent of our, our, um, budget, uh, but we had a lot, a lot bigger budget um, last year. Mainly because of, uh, Belfair had a lot more revenue budgeted and then I believe Scope was the other, yeah, Scope is the other big one. Um, which, by the way, we have talked a little bit about, um, doing away with the Scope Fund possibly in the twenty-twenty-four budget, so, um, I just wanted to kind of bring that up as a, um, as a little precursor, we'll be bringing that to you Commissioners as a, as an option to ru- roll that into the, um, road fund in the twenty-four budget possibly.
So something that's interesting, looking at that number, uh, just to keep in mind for everybody, the REIT, uh, overall, we've been talking month to month and stuff, but overall it looks like a twenty percent. So that's, that's how much we want to try and gain back. Not the full, you know, month to month, we had one at forty-one, thirty, but so overall it looks like it's twenty percent. That's attainable. Well, and even if it's not, it's, if we end up, uh, because we're getting smaller and smaller, if we end up at fifteen or what, we're still in great shape.
Yeah, that's good news. Anything else on the revenue before we move on to the expenditures?
No.
Okay. So the, um, the expenditures for the special and other funds, we've expended twenty-two million eight hundred and fifty-one thousand this year compared to last year, twenty-one million three hundred and thirty thousand. We're at thirty percent of our budgeted expenditures this year compared to twenty-four percent last year. And again, it kind of, you know, we had a lot more expenditures budgeted, um, compared to this year, um, so that is nothing to be alarmed about, twenty-four and thirty percent. So that's all I have on that unless there's any other questions.
None for me.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, that's all we had for support services, so if you want to move on to public health. Steve here. There he is.
He's not here.
Yeah, I saw him.
No, I, it's an old joke. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Dave gets it.
Yeah, I get it. Yeah, so, um, good morning Commissioners. We've got, um, several things on uh, line for you here. I'm gonna start off with mine. I've got, um, uh, one that's been in the briefing packet and I've got a couple of things just to touch base on really quickly. So in the briefing packet, you've got, um, a proposal for Randex Tech Toxicology. Uh, this is a machine that'll allow us to do, um, tox screening for, and it's be through the coroner's office. This device would allow us to clean up um, death certificates. It, it may times it takes, it takes weeks if not months to get a tox screen back in order to close that, a death certificate. This will allow us to do tox screens in about seventeen minutes. And not only will we get, uh, like a presence of drug, but we'll get quantitative results as well. So if it's, if it's, uh, meth and fentanyl and a heroin, it'll tell us how much of each, uh, which will give us a lot more uh, clarity and surveillance on what's going on in the community as far as, as drug use, drug overdoses, that sort of thing. It'll also, uh, give us the ability to, if the sheriff's office has an accident and they think a driver is, is, um, uh, a dr- a drug impaired, they'll be able to do this, get a tox screen back right away instead of taking weeks or months. Uh, get it back and get those cases cleared and off their books, so.
And you have a grant this is coming out of, it looks like?
We're taking this out of, out of, um, foundational public health. We've got a piece specific to, uh, illicit drug use.
No, I'm in favor. I appreciate it.
I'm as well.
Okay.
Couple of questions, Dave. Um, where will this be housed? And then also, I want to make sure that, that it is, that the results are admissible in court.
Yeah, so, um, this, this will go to the coroner's office, uh, and she is familiar with this equipment. She's used it in, in, um, Kitsap County. So, um, Seattle, King County also purchased this, so did Okanagan, uh, a number of other, uh, places in Washington are starting to use this for the, these reasons. I talked to them about the admissibility. They said it's certainly admissible for charging and it would need a con- confirmatory with the state lab, but, um, uh, this can get the whole process started. For our purposes, for death certificates, completely, um, good to go on those.
Okay, I know the state patrol is like, what? Uh, I can't remember how many days, a hundred and sixty days behind or something like that?
Yeah, some of these things, I mean, they're our months behind, you know, and this will allow us to do, uh, blood and urine screens, so.
Okay. I support it.
Okay, we'll get that, move to, um, the action agenda, uh, for next go-around. Um, F P H S, we talked about that a little, I heard you, I'll talk about that a little bit earlier. So Casey and I filled out or finished the, F P H S reconciliation form, so a description of what we've done, what's improved, that sort of thing, and that is a, a, a a switch that once that is done and the ConCon is signed, which is on the action agenda for tomorrow, that turns on our funding for the year. So, all the pieces have been submitted. We'll get the sign tomorrow and we should be able to have our F P H S funding uh, coming to us. I have talked to D O H and I talked to, um, Wasawo about the way this, this, this is going. I have no problem doing these, these, these forms and these, the, uh, filling out these switches. But what happens is no matter what we do, no matter how good we are, we're going to have a two-week, two-one-month delay in getting the funding to us because of the way this is set up administratively. So we are going to talk to F M about possibly doing a thirteen-month contract, so we would have a month rollover to allow us to do these things in July each year and it can, can you continue to spend money? So, uh, instead of having it shut off first of July and nothing going again until all this other stuff is done, so we're working that that piece through. This year, much better than last year. We got our contracts in, uh, first part of July. Uh, you'll see it on the action agenda tomorrow. Last year, we didn't get those until the end of October, so D O H has improved their process dramatically in this last year to get those out to us in, in a timely fashion, so it's not the big problem that it was last year. And then the other thing is, uh, Mount McDonald on our, uh, data review for water use in Raya fourteen. We met with them last week. We've got another meeting set up for next week with the tribe to go over the results. We met with them last week. We've got another meeting set up for next week with the tribe to go over the results to make sure that uh, all what what we're looking for, the outputs are what the tribe is looking for that supports our um MOA with the tribe, so we are winding up that piece of that work.
Sounds good.
Any questions on either of those? Okay, Melissa.
Morning commissioners, um, I've I've got a few items. Uh, first two, we've briefed them before. So um, we've got the contract for the consolidated homeless grant from the Department of Commerce um, as well as the subcontractors with our agencies. So we briefed that previously, they're ready to move to tomorrow's action agenda unless you have any questions or opposition to anything moving forward. Um, additionally, we also received the contract for the emergency housing fund, so the last time that I briefed that, we didn't know yet what amount we were getting for it. Um, it is, I think, about eight hundred and sixty five thousand, and the purpose of that is to really backfill a lot of the um, the sunsetting funds that came through during COVID, so those are all ending, all the emergency dollars. Those go through, those contracts with our subcontractors go through September. So we have the contract with Commerce to accept the funds ready for the action agenda tomorrow. Um, and we'll move forward with the actual subcontractor contracts once the existing funds are spent down in September.
Okay, so you're not asking us yet who to give the money to, so we got a little time there to figure. Okay, thank you. I'm supportive.
So am I.
I'm as well.
Perfect, that one's the easy one. Um, the next item that I have is uh regarding the behavioral health transportation pilot program. Um, so it's my understanding, some of you have also received some information about it. I think I'll start with maybe giving you a little bit of a background on kind of what's happened with that. It's particular um to the Patty Wagon's contract to do the in-county transportation services. Um, so that contract started in February of twenty twenty two. And it was supposed to be a two-year contract that would go through the end of uh December of twenty twenty three. Um, it seemed to be a very popular program that was highly utilized and really served a lot of people, and that contract um, the budget, it was eighty thousand dollars for two years, forty thousand dollars for year one, forty thousand dollars for year two. Um, that was spent down in March of twenty twenty three, so is that nine months early? Um, so kind of in that time, you know, the Patty Wagon was communicating with us. They knew they were gonna spend down their budget for the first year. Um, and so I think that was about October of twenty two, they had asked me, what do we do? We went ahead and advised them. I went ahead and advised them to go ahead and continue through the end of the year, which was twenty twenty two. Um, and the purpose, the rationale behind that is really, you know, do we stop the program in year one and have a little bit of a disruption in service and then continue again in year two, or do we go ahead and just utilize some of that year two budget to continue the program as long as we could, knowing that they would they would spend down their you their year two budget early. Um, there was a good intention effort to find some additional dollars to help the program continue a little bit through the summer, knowing how useful it was and how critical it was for that target population. Um, but unfortunately, we weren't able to get any new contracts in place and time, and so the budget for year two and for the whole pilot program was spent down early, and now um they actually overspent it. So we have about fifteen thousand dollars that the Patty Wagon is invoicing us for. And um, you know, the question is, do we go ahead and pay it? How should we proceed with that? We've tried really hard. I've tried really hard to find some additional dollars to help back pay that. Um, but they've invoiced us, and so I think it's now time to bring it to the commission to decide, do we go ahead and take that out of treatment sales tax? Um, how do we proceed?
Well, if you don't mind, Melissa, uh, I'll get an I, in everything that I read, so I read through the packet as well and stuff. It looked like in good faith that the county did express to them to try and move forward. And because it's a successful uh uh program, but that uh reading from yours that you were also suggesting that they continue to move forward. With that being said, uh, I know you were trying your best to get the funds, but it didn't happen, but I think we need to back our employees push on that in good faith for both the the contractor and the employee because uh, sometimes that is how things work if we have the the ability to pull it out of a specific fund to pay for it. So Dave, I'm talking to you, I guess, uh specifically on that one, letting you know where I'm at on it. I believe we we back the employee and back the intention that they did if it's possible. If not, it's not, but if it is possible, I'd like to see us move forward and take care of that.
Yeah, I I agree. I think first off, I I think this is a great program. Um, you know, it's it's unique to us and and I think that it's been successful. Obviously, it's been successful, prob- probably a little too successful. Uh, you know, at least as as we got started with it, and so I'm definitely comfortable utilizing treatment sales tax to um to make Patty Wagon whole, and you know, they've been good partners throughout this, and I think um you know, it does, if we wanna continue on with the transportation program, I think it does invite more conversation about um, the appropriate sideboards that are on a program, so that, you know, we don't find ourselves back in the situation where, you know, we're we're over over budget, and I mean, those are things like you know, who's making the appointments, who's scheduling the rides, how do we handle canceled canceled rides and reimbursement for that, if at all? Um, you know, how do we, you know, part of what we read in the packet was you know, that there were increased fuel costs and maintenance costs and everything like that, and it's, you know, that that probably something that the contract initially couldn't have predicted or maybe was silent on, but you know, how do we, how do we compensate for things like that? Um, just so that we have clear expectations for the for the contractor and for and for the taxpayers, but I I think um, you know, this should not take away from, I think, a very valuable program that that staff put together and and that we were piloting, and and I hope that you know, we can cover this cost for the Patty Wagon and then start looking to the future about how we how we you know, get to that next phase of this pilot program and and tighten it up a little bit.
We do have our epidemiologists reviewing the data from the first year and a half of the program, and it's already kind of told us some really insightful information. I agree with you that um, having some parameters around how we can also utilize some other services that are available in the area. We have Mason Transit as well. That might be more appropriate for some of the trips that the Patty Wagon um had done for this program. So eventually, we will come to the commission with you know, suggestions for a new program, should it become something that's permanent.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I Patty Wagon, they they do provide such a good service. Um, and and I don't want to tell them how to run their business, but I think that we need to be concise in our language um in the contracts to make sure that that if there are other services that are free, um, that those get utilized as well.
So I again, uh, I like the term make hole. Uh, if we have it within our ability to make hole, I'd like to make hole. And I wanna make clear that, uh, Melissa, I don't think you did anything wrong. I think you were doing your best to try and keep it all alive and keep it going because it was actually working, and you believed you had it. In the future, we'll be a little more restrictive on that, but but nobody's looking down at you for what you did there because it needed to be done, and I, so I, what you know is this commissioner, I appreciate it. Uh, that sideboard uh aspect of it. The other two commissioners have made it clear, and I completely agree, we need to be able to weed out uh that which people would like to do it, or those uh where this specific uh, connection with uh this organization is absolutely necessary. That's the difference, necessity versus uh ease of access and stuff. Because we can't afford to give everybody everything, so, but maybe we can, if you guys decide it was in health and it's a great program, maybe we can't afford to do what we absolutely can to to provide the necessity uh uh, to help them get there, get it done. So thank you. Dave, do you need more from us, or do you have the money available that you can uh move over to that?
I think we can, uh, yeah, I'll get with Casey and we can maybe have the conversation with Jennifer. If we're gonna do it out of treatment sales tax, which is the was the original fund. Uh, we'll we'll get to, let's get it coordinated.
Can we, can we negotiate with them a little bit on the penalties that they've assessed on these bills and it's only three hundred and twenty one bucks or three hundred and twenty two dollars, but when they they did go over the the contract amount of eighty thousand dollars, and so I'm wondering if uh if we could negotiate that out.
I think they should, good faith come to us uh with that. I I would agree with that.
I can coordinate that conversation.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Um, great job.
Thank you, appreciate it. That is all I've got.
It's hot out there. Beware. Uh, one of the things that did pop up over the weekend is that Walla Walla yeah, Walla Walla, uh, had legionnaires in one of their uh motels, and so um, it's it's a disease that is still out there and still running around in in the water supply. Um, and typically in the hot water systems that get warm and um, so uh, we'll be we'll be watching that to see what comes this direction.
Well, I was in Walla Walla, but I did not stay in a hotel, so I should be okay.
Mark, are you patient zero?
Yeah. So, I I guess all I have.
All right, commissioners, anything for Dave?
Thank you, Dave.
My thanks.
All righty, Loretta, are you there?
Loretta, yeah. Yes, I am here. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll get some, there we go, action photo. We have a a short briefing this morning, commissioners, and primarily just to provide you some updates on some bid results. We had two bid openings on Friday and to share a status report on the solid waste long haul project. And Mike will give you the exciting bid result information.
Exciting.
Very exciting.
Good morning. Uh, so first, uh, we opened a couple bids uh last Friday. Uh, one was North Island Drive Culvert Replacement. There was eight bidders. Uh, the the engineer's estimate was five uh, five hundred and eighty five thousand. Uh, and the low bid was six hundred and seventy eight thousand, so it was a little high. Um, but the bids went all the way up to a million dollars, so um, the new New X Incorporated is the construction uh company that got the low bid. And this is slated for construction in twenty twenty four because we're still working on a couple permits and a little bit of ride away to finish the the job up, but uh we'll we'll get this thing and uh we'll get it actually constructed next year. It'd be great, so. The second thing we did was we opened bids for Mason Lake number two. Uh, that if you recall, that's about one point six miles of paving. Uh, extend from the project we did last year. Uh, engineer's estimate was about eight hundred thousand. And the low bid came in at six uh ninety five, so about seven hundred thousand, so uh, that was Lakeside Industries Industries and and Lakeside's been around forever, so there's been a good outfit to work for, work with, excuse me. Uh, a couple of other things we're working on is Harstein Island Bridge. Um Masana has uh has completed some bearing replacement work and some ex- expansion joint uh work. Uh, they're preparing to uh actually do the polymer polyester concrete overlay uh, on the eastbound lane. That's supposed to actually start tonight about six o'clock. Um, it's kind of an interesting, look kind of like peanut butter brittle type is what it looks like. Um um, but uh, we're excited to get that thing completed. Uh, Old Bill for Highway is another uh paving project that we have went out to bid. Uh, county forces have completed all the dirt work. And the little bidder was uh granite construction this time, about six hundred and forty four thousand to come in and do the paving portion, so uh, we are, I think we have a pre-construction meeting with them on Wednesday, so we're gonna get started pretty soon.
So Mike, on these uh, uh, you were saying the one was over, a lot over. What are you finding overall out there? Are we are we staying as satisfied with where we think we're supposed to be? Uh, we're uh doing our engineer um, determinations of value? Or is it shifting?
The the North Island Drive Culvert, uh, the estimate came from our consultant uh, of about five hundred and eighty five thousand. I told him I didn't think it'd come in under six hundred and fifty. It came in at six seventy eight, so so it's not too far from what we were expecting from uh our own numbers. Um, but it is within our budget uh uh to do that. What am I noticing? Uh, the biggest thing is probably materials for these types of structures. Uh, the state's got everybody uh tied up um with their with their culvert jobs and stuff, so um I think one um, uh, one structure that we're ordering here recently is uh coming out of Canada. Because that's the only place they could find it actually. So the price is going up and those those type of things, because shipping and stuff, uh, so you know, it kind of is what it is right now. I don't know if I answered your question.
I did, thank you.
So two other projects, HSIP uh grants that we've uh finally got uh through local programs is our uh horizontal curve data analysis. That's the uh, that's the program that's going to tell us where we should and and shouldn't have uh warning signs for around corners and stuff, so we've got interns uh working with our sign techs uh driving the roads now. Uh, the other one is the signpost reflective panels. Uh, if you look around, you'll see we've already got the ones up on the stop signs. And they're working on uh the yellow warning signs uh too. Um, Road Crew, Road Crew has completed shoulder paving on Rockdale, Sand Hill, Grapeview, Lynch Road, Shelton Matlock, and we just got done um installing Sunnyside uh Road Culvert at mile post two point seven eight. Uh, so we've been fairly busy. They're working on uh paving shoulders on McGreevy Road. Uh, which is basically from Dalby back this way, about one point six miles all the way over top the hill. And uh, we're also preparing Sunnyside Road for chip sealing. That'd be our first gravel conversion of the year. And that's enough.
Yeah, I was gonna comment on that, the the sign reflectors. I thought they were pretty darn cool, and they they do catch your eye. Oh, it's cool.
Hopefully it'll convince somebody to stop at them.
Right, that is the idea.
And good luck.
All right, and then next up, commissioners, a quickie update on our long haul contract that we put out to add. We had two responsive proposals, one from Republic Services and one from Mason County Garbage. And we held interviews Wednesday last week to um review the proposals themselves, ask some follow-up questions in detail, and we are now preparing to proceed with negotiations and anticipation of presenting the results to commissioners at a hearing on August first. And so so far, we're sticking to the schedule that we'd laid out before. And we will be advertising the hearing this week and the following week and preparing the briefing packet to present to commissioners ahead of the hearing.
Loretta, if you don't mind, uh, I would appreciate if you would give me a copy of each of the responses. And I have it for me on my desk, so I can go over them personally uh line for line also.
Absolutely. We will get that to commissioners.
Thank you.
And there was quite a difference, commissioners, in the in the proposals, so it will take some careful consideration.
No, and I appreciate it. That's why I wanna look at it, it's what I had explained to me. Uh, you said something though that caught me off guard in a good way. Uh, you said negotiations are underway. Are they gonna be given an opportunity to change some of those numbers?
It is a negotiation, yes. Yeah, and there are details in the contract about um escalating factors, fuel costs, duration of the contract, value-added services.
Okay, well, that's what I didn't, that was a new term used in this process, uh. But again, the solid waste uh hauling is a different animal than a lot of the things we do for the people in the public. There's a lot more uh flexibility in things that the commission can decide to do. Uh, whatever they decide to do, they have to explain it to the public, so. So that's why I need to see all the different options, and I didn't know that you could negotiate. I'd be curious as to be kept in the loop on that after it's done. I appreciate it.
Mark, you un unmuted. You have some.
I'm good.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm good. Go ahead. I'll 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 keep it to myself for now, and then we'll we'll get into the negotiation side. It's it's really It's, it's really interesting to look at all the details, you know, associated with the proposals that we received. And, and so there's a lot that goes into it, um, in, in making those decisions, so interested in, in how we move forward.
Any other questions commissioners on the long haul contract?
I'll be curious to see them.
All right. And that's about it in terms of discussion items. And we've got the laundry list of calendar, upcoming calendar and projects. And Mike highlighted those as well. I don't know, Richard, are you still on board here? We've got some activity also that we did not lay out, but we've got the, uh, I think last briefing, we talked about the. Upgrades to the Russell Wood Electrical System. And preparing to do some cleaning of our storage, our water system storage out at Russell Wood. And then we also have the screen parts for Belfair that were delivered last week, Richard?
Yeah, yeah, we're, uh. Some, some of the parts showed up for the screen, some didn't. We knew that was gonna be the case. We, we are, uh. Installing the critical parts that will get us rolling again per se, uh, no pun intended, it's a bearing joke, um. And, uh, so anyway. We've got that going on. We are taking the small reservoir offline at Russell Wood today. And we are gonna drain that and clean it and get it prepared. Uh, while, while we got a million other things going on, the, uh. The other is more of a staffing issue. We are, um. Two months ago, we had seven. Right now, we're a little under four. I've, I've got three. That are either, that are there, I got three F T Es. And the fourth one is, is on a, a limited basis. Um, so yeah, I've had a, a couple of. Unexpected issues to deal with. So we're getting a lot done with like half the work, workforce right now. To put it bluntly and, uh, effective today, we're switching our schedules. Uh, Monday through Friday. With, uh, Saturday and Sunday, we've got some mandatory testing and the on-call operator will be taking care of those duties. Until we get staffing levels back up, who knows, we might just stick, stick with, you know, what makes the most sense. But, but that's, that's done. Just so we can. Survive at the moment.
And we have operator interviews in August, Richard, the first of August, is that correct?
Yeah, for operator interviews, so hopefully we can get this turned around. We can get a couple of people, uh, healed back up and. And be back up to staffing again. It doesn't take much when you've got a small staff, they're crippled yet.
Right, Loretta or Richard, are there intern opportunities? There?
Well, we will be using some of the engineering interns' time, um, but, you know. We want to be respectful of why they're here. So we, they won't be just doing daily operator stuff, but they'll be assisting with some of these things. Like, we, we, we know we've got a couple of them that are, well, all three of them are. Have an aptitude for mechanical engineering and that'd be great to, to be there to observe and witness and help out on, uh, screen replacements or rebuilds and stuff like that. And. And I know one of them has an interest in, in some, uh, water quality. And so that'll be helpful, uh, participating with Russell Wood Systems. So yeah, we'll, we will be able to utilize some of those types of interns. Um. I hope that's what you were referring to.
Actually, I'm gonna go a little further. She, she, what she's saying to me, uh, is, can be even more important, uh. I think she's hoping that you're going to reach out, uh, for people that can come in as interns and do it. Water quality is, is. A big thing in, in this industry. We, if we haven't found that out as commissioner, I don't know what to say. Uh, they're wanted and needed absolutely everywhere, uh, and have a high value. It would make sense that we can find a way to take advantage of that for, uh, water quality, uh, certifications. Uh, to set something like that up. I think we should, and then we may also have the ability to, to keep them. Uh, to have a, a bullpen, so to speak, or maybe even additionally add another body. Uh, because we have somebody qualified within our internal ranks and, uh, redundancy is sometimes a good thing in, in, in water quality. If we haven't, and sewage and stuff, we haven't found that out. I don't know when we ever will learn that one. So I guess I'm gonna piggyback on what Commissioner Trask is saying and ask, can we look at bringing more in? I think it's a brilliant idea.
Yeah, and, and some of the, some of the other ones that, that I, that I've toured, like the one in Vancouver, they, they use interns. Um, consistently. And so I, I just think it's a great opportunity for the interns and for us.
Now, so maybe, uh, it's semantics. We do have an operator in training position. Then there's also apprenticeships and then internships. So it's perhaps expanding or more fully utilizing all aspects or all potential sources there. I see Mary, Mary jumped on here too. Mary, do you have something to add to that?
Oh, I was just gonna say, this is our pilot internship program, so hopefully, um, and I think Loretta, everything's going really well over there and they're, we're getting a lot out of it. So I would love to see this type of program expand and we can utilize it. There's a lot of departments watching to see how it works so that they can bring in interns as well. So I think there's a lot of potential in this program for sure.
Well, especially water quality and, and sewage and the like, uh, I'm only speaker for myself, but I'd be willing to, um, uh, vote to, to, uh. Fund. Uh, programs like this, I, I think it's absolutely necessary if we've got the opportunity. I was in construction in my youth, so I could tell you, these pro, programs are, can be absolutely wonderful. And it gives these other people an opportunity to move into new fields and do new, new things. We may even find some internal candidates, believe it or not, that wanna switch.
Try something different, absolutely.
Well, I could use the help.
Yeah, I know you can.
So I'm not against it.
All right. Thank you, commissioners.
Ri- Richard, I got a quick question for you. But just to put you on the spot, because I, I know how you love that part, but you're gonna get some, you're gonna get some water quality tests done of the, the holding tanks there in Russell Wood. Were you able to, to get that done yet?
No, we haven't. We need to take another core sample and then segregate it. Try to get just the, the sediment.
Yep.
Of it, and then, then we'll go back and just try it. It would, well, it'll be easy to get the, you know, mid, mid depth.
So we can. And then as you, as you, as you drain that trank, tank out, then you'll actually be able to physically see. What exists in the bottom of the tank, correct?
Yeah, I mean, what, we should be able to, with taking a core sample. Just taking that bottom sediment layer and knowing how deep it is, we'll be able to measure that. We know how big the tank is. We can actually quantify how many pounds of sediment. Yeah, anything after that.
Great, that, that'll be interesting to see the results.
You bet.
All right, commissioners, anything for Loretta?
Just a, uh, quick word of thanks for, uh, staff and tip cap for the meeting at the Civic Center the other night, uh. We only had a couple of residents attend the meeting, but the presentation that Phil did was, I think, super informative and showed a lot of really good. Progress pictures, um, and so it's, uh, just, I think it's a, it's a good thing to continue to get out there and, and share our. Um, share our projects and at least, uh, offer an opportunity for input, even if, uh, even if we don't fill the house every time. Um, it's still good to be out there sharing the message, uh, of public work, so just, uh, thanks to everybody who was involved.
Also, it's good for us to be there, and I apologize that I wasn't. I got called away at the last minute. I'm so glad that you were able to attend, Commissioner. Uh, it's important when we as commissioners do attend those things, we end up picking up extra information and the ability to communicate with some of the neighbors. So thank you for going. I wish I had gone. I wish I could have.
Yeah, I'm, I have to apologize. I was, I. Had the days wrong.
Oh, no.
I was talking to Amy and I said, yeah, I'm gonna go to the tip cap meeting tonight, and she was like, uh, that was last night. I'm like, oh, no. So mine was just a complete brain fart, sorry.
There's a lot to keep track of, for sure. Yeah, definitely appreciate it.
Speaking of dates being wrong, uh, Loretta, uh, I was approached at, uh, the Allen Days by somebody I respect very, very much, Mr. Pickles from, from, uh, Allen. From Lake Village, uh, and we talked about, uh, the presentation and the fact that I was not there.
Right.
I was given the wrong date by staff. It wasn't done on purpose, but he definitely noticed that I was not there. But he had some questions. He had made some comments, I guess, at the meeting that the commissioners are the ones that made the wrong decision. That's true. So with that being said, though, I want to remind you what I'm still hoping for and, uh, what I expressed to him that I'm still hoping for. But I don't speak for the commission just for myself on that, and that is that, uh, you will bring back to the community again.
The rates.
Yeah, details and options for them to consider, along with explanations of why we may do things before, uh, the commissioners. Uh, select, uh, any plan. One of the things I expressed, uh, to him was that although we look at the, the concept, there may be twenty-five percent that wasn't used. In the general use for that year that we still have to maintain certain reserves, certain monies, because things happen. And we're becoming at capacity up there with new and expanded, uh, uh, houses being built. That eventually we're gonna reach the point where we're gonna have to do something about it and we have to have money in the bank to do those type of things. Even if we're gonna just use money in the bank for, uh, for grant matching and, and stuff, it still costs some money. So when we go back to the community, if we're agreeing that we are going to do that, which I hope we are. Uh, let's bring those explanations of why also we may need to have these extra ones, why it just isn't money in, money out every year. Uh, I wish it was that simple, but we all know from, you know, on the other end of it here, it just doesn't work that way. We have to. To plan and we have to, uh, look at the future and look at what could happen tomorrow with the infrastructure we have. So.
And that's why it's super critical for when we put together our legislative requests that we impress upon our delegation. You know, why these proj, why we're asking for these projects, because it, it provides another relief valve for the ratepayers.
Yep.
You know, it's, it's critical work, but it also, it saves the ratepayers in the long run from having to shoulder the full burden of. What it takes to maintain a system both in the present and in the future.
And it may help if they know about it to, to make their phone calls, uh, on our behalf.
Yeah.
Thank you, though, Loretta.
Yeah, no, thank you.
So Loretta, one quick, uh, one other quick question. So with our, with our chip ceilings, do you have, um. Uh, month of July for these conversions and then re-chip ceiling?
Yep.
But is that all on track to, yeah, I mean, we're like, you know, we have a couple of weeks left in July. I mean, do you think that's gonna push into August? Or do you feel like you guys are gonna be able to get those roads chip sealed this month?
I know that Mike and Jeremy were reviewing their aggressive schedule this morning. Mike, are you still on board there?
Yes, I am.
Uh, yes, you are.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be, uh, running into August, uh, uh, for, probably the first week at least. Um, then we've got scheduled the Rock Creek Bridge on the seventh, so we'll be, we'll get it done before then.
Okay.
Yeah, and you said they were out crowning Sunnyside, getting that prepared to shoot.
Yep.
Now, Mike, yeah.
Yes, they are. They're, they're out there working right at this moment.
So is the order of business Sunnyside, then Sunny Slope, and then Kelly Hall?
That is the plan.
Okay. And then, uh, you know what they say about best laid plans, right?
Right.
So, and then the other question is, any updates from D O T on, on how their work is progressing on one oh six? Are they still tracking the, to reopen at the end of this month or maybe? Maybe if we're all lucky, maybe a few days early. Have you heard anything?
Nothing recent, um, Commissioner, so I can check in though with Amy and see if she's got an update and whether we're still on track on one oh six. And we haven't had too many. Um, recent issues in terms of traffic concerns that we've heard from the front desk. I know Commissioner Nethalyn, you sent some. Alerts early on in the process. Have you had anything impactful or is it the same impact? Or anything that you've been hearing from the Belfair community?
On which item? My, my apologies, I just got an emergency message and it got my attention.
Yeah, sorry, on the one oh six roadwork for the Tomahawk Fish Barrier Project.
Yeah, uh, there's, there's people that are complaining and then upset, but at the same time, uh. Uh, most everybody realizes it's gonna be what it's gonna be, and they know it's not the, well, I, most of them know it's not the county's fault. And most of them even know that the state is required to do what they have to do within fish windows and stuff. So it's actually very easy for me to explain when they do contact me. At least that's what I'm telling them as we're going through and, uh, uh, if it gets too bad, they also know that you. Personally will reach out to them to try and find other options, make things happen for the community. Uh, they believe in you for all the different times we've done that before. So that becomes part of the conversation as well, so I guess a little extra thank you for that, because they do know that you would do your best to step in and help them if you've got too overbearing.
All right, thank you. I, and hats off to Mike. So we have our own coordination concerns, right? We've got a lot of closures also for similar type activity, our fish barrier projects and, and other. And I know that Mike and Dave and Jeremy followed up with Bob Burbage and our emergency responders to talk through ways of. Improving coordination and planning and preparing for these future closures. So I thank you very much to, to Mike and team and, um, and our emergency responders to. Make sure that we're doing the best for our community in that regard.
Right, anything else for Loretta?
Me.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, commissioners.
Great, thank you, Loretta.
Have a great week.
Thanks, you too. All right, commissioners, do we have anything that we need to discuss?
Yeah, I have one item. Um, so commissioners, I just, I wanted to kind of gauge interest from, uh, from you all. Um, we haven't had a joint meeting with the city council, uh, in quite a while and left a few items open-ended, uh, from our last meeting in, in November. But I thought it might be a good opportunity to have a joint session in the next, uh, few weeks, couple of months, uh, to talk specifically about, uh, crime and, and homelessness issues. Um, we're bringing online our co-responder program. Uh, they have a D C R program that they're working with, uh, but I just thought with the changes coming to Blake and a lot of the. Lot of the associated issues that it might be good to get together and, uh, and try to get aligned on, on some of these issues. Um, I know that, uh, these are, these are topics that are prominent countywide, um, and, and just wanted to. See if there was any interest.
No, I think that that's a great idea. I'm meeting with a few people today at, uh, one o'clock. Um. To talk about, um, some issues going on downtown. And so, but, and I know that Mark has reached out to the other Mark to see if we could get some, at least, you know, chair and, um. City manager and, and our county administrator and the mayor together to talk, but I don't know that. Um, he's received any word back yet, but I think that's a great idea. I think the more we work with the city together on issues, the better.
I am also very supportive. I. You know, it's, it, there's some good relationships that have been happening here recently, and I'd like to help foster them even further if we can.
Great, so Mark, you can work on scheduling?
Yep, I will, uh, I will reach out to Mr. Ziegler and, and, uh, see what their calendar looks like.
Yeah, it's also, you know, just a good timing with, you know, the funding we received for a jail study from the legislature and. Just want people to know that they might not always see effort and work being done on these issues, uh, relating to crime. But I can assure you that we're all, we're all focused on it and wanna see improvements and are doing things. So it's good to also remind the public of what we are doing.
And we probably need to get a briefing in regards, uh, to what, what we're talking about here soon about the animal control. Uh, be wise to have that before we walk in the room together.
That is on my list also. Um, so just to kind of give you a quick update on the jail study. Uh, our sheriff's office has been working with our public health department and so actually reviewed a proposed contract and some, provided some feedback to that. Uh, end of last week, and so I would imagine we'll be bringing that before the board, uh, to brief on within the next couple of weeks.
Sounds great. Sounds great.
I have something also, if uh Kevin's done.
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Uh first, uh Diane, is she still on? Are you around Diane?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi Diane, first, I wanna give you a special thank you, I uh I attended the uh celebration of life for our employee. And uh. It was amazing, not a little disappointed on some of the, how things went about from the time that it occurred. Uh but there's one thing I was not disappointed in, and that was you, and I heard how you went in when they were at the very low point. And was wondering what the heck was going on and where were the the bosses and stuff, and then you came in and treated them all like they had always hoped. And dreamed that they would be treating during an issue in a situation like that. And it showed your professionalism and your understanding of each of our employees and what they need and 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 what should have. Been occurring at that time, and I just wanted to call you out specific because they specifically called you out and let me know. How wonderful and how important it was, what you did at the specific exact time that you did it. So I just wanna thank you. On behalf of all those individuals.
Yeah, and they're great staff, I appreciate them, so thank you.
Well, they felt it, they definitely felt it, uh the other thing I wanna ask is for you to keep in mind, I have just made arrangements uh. Uh that on the first, I am going to have to leave immediately after the meeting. Uh it can you make sure if possible, if the other commissioners will agree to have as light a session as we can on the first, so I can make sure to get out. Uh because I have to jump on a plane and I can't take a chance of missing it.
What time would you wanna be out of here, Commissioner?
If I got out by nine thirty, I'd be happy, but if we put on uh hearings or something like that, it could go extend farther than that. Uh one traffic jam and I'll be out of out of luck.
I think there was one scheduled, uh we just talked about it today, the um.
One goal.
It was worth.
But I don't think that one's scheduled for next week, Loretta, is that correct?
Right. You're asking for August first, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So for August first, sorry, I got the, I was thinking you were talking about the twenty-fourth, so August first, okay.
Right, so I do think that there was one mentioned, um.
I do think the long haul contract was something that they were talking about scheduling for the first.
No, uh they they would make arrangements, it's on our agenda to schedule it two weeks out, so that wouldn't make any sense. Is are we announcing that uh tomorrow?
No, we're not, we're 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 going through negotiations, so we're not ready to bring forward a contract.
Yeah, so we we wouldn't be having a hearing two weeks from now.
We we were planning on having a public hearing on the first, we don't have to, this this uh, we looked at the R C Ws, this doesn't require the fifteen day.
Okay, interesting.
Advanced notice for a public hearing.
Again, another difference in that one particular contract.
Yeah, yep.
Richard, can we move that to the eighth then?
Ooh, I don't think so, we don't have that much slippage in our.
Is there any possibility we can meet specifically on Monday? If the other commissioners would agree for, you know, we can do the hearing online.
Call a special meeting on Monday, but.
Yeah, just for the hearing and still have the regular meeting, you know, just so that if if time is of the essence, I guess. I would hate for it to turn into a big battle and uh we have to. Leave in the middle of it.
So I would be totally fine if we wanted to have a special meeting on the thirty-first to to specifically do this hearing. Um to accommodate, I'm I'm all good with that.
I appreciate it, thank you, guys.
I mean, as long as that works for Richard and Loretta, I'm all good with it.
We'll make it work. Yeah, sorry about that.
No problem, better better to know now.
All right, anything else?
Not for me.
All right, I have nothing. So. Do we want a motion?
Move to adjourn.
I don't know, Madam Chair, do we want a motion?
I would appreciate one. All right, see you guys all tomorrow.
Thank you.
Bye.